Good morning, welcome to the Tulare County Planning Commission. October 12th, 2016. Note, information concerning the following agenda items is available for public consideration during normal working hours at the Resource Management Agency Permit Center, Muni Boulevard, in Visaya. The staff will assist in answering questions. And for further information about the Planning Commission, see the last page. We have the roll call, please. Gong.
Here.
Millies.
Here.
Elliot.
Here.
Diaz.
Here.
Whitlatch.
Here.
Pategiano.
Here.
Aguilar.
Here.
Do you want me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the Chair. In order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 28th meeting?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of September 28th, 2016 minutes.
A second.
May I have the vote, please? Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz. Yes. Whitlatch.
Yes.
Pategiano.
Sting.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Thank you, motion approved. Parcel map public hearings. Action on all parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of these items requests that it be pulled for a separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given on any item unless requested. In any case, there will be a separate vote on these items. Have a mission? No problems?
You need a motion?
Please?
Start with one at a time, I think, right?
Yes.
I believe we need to open a...
Oh, I'm sorry, I do need to open the public hearing first. I will open the public hearing for tentative parcel map number PPM 16-027. Jack and Camila Wheat, James Winton and Associates. This is a categorical exemption, tentative parcel map number PPM 16-027, to divide one 10.26 acre parcel into two parcels. Now, Diaz, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, this is, looks to be like a typical, um, home, you know, home, home split? Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do. So I would make a motion to approve a categorical exemption which is consistent with SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14. And conditionally approve a tentative parcel map PPM 16-027 with a waiver of the final map.
Second it.
Thank you, could we have the vote? Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Pategiano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried. B is tentative parcel map number PPM 16-031. Francisco Javier and Alina Escobedo, Forrester Weber and Associates, LLC. It's a categorical exemption and tentative parcel map number PPM 16-031 to divide one 7.41 acre parcel into two parcels. Parcel one would be .081 acres in the C2 general commercial zone and parcel two 6.59 in the R1 single family residential zone. The site is located on the north side of Avenue 168 approximately 240 feet east of Road 168 in Woodville. Have a motion for this?
Specifically open the...
I opened.
Open for the first one.
Through the chair, it's one public hearing for all parcel maps?
Right.
She specifically said PPM 16-0727.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, did I say, I said the wrong number?
Three one.
I'm sorry, thank you for the correction. Tentative parcel map number PPM 16-031. Corrected.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, please, if you...
I'll make a motion, we approve categorical exemption consistent with California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulations, Section 15315, Class 15 pertaining to minor land divisions in urbanized areas, and conditionally approve tentative parcel map number PPM 16-031.
A second it.
Thank you, do we have the vote? Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Pategiano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing for the tentative parcel maps. And we have public hearing, special use permit number PSP 16-040, E&amp;D Farms, excuse me, Incorporated. A categorical exemption and special use permit number PSP 16-040 to allow an agricultural service establishment fruit packing facility on a 9.71 acre parcel in the AE20 exclusive agriculture 20 acre minimum zone. The site is located on the west side of Road 52, one half mile north of Avenue 416, west of Dinuba, and our contact is Dana Metlin. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you. This project is categorically exempt according to Section 15301, Class 1 pertaining to existing facilities. And entitlement is found in Section 9.6E.24. Pursuant to agricultural service establishments are allowed in the AE20 zone when they are providing services to farmers in planting, harvesting, storage, and hauling. Sites located in the Rural Valley Lands Plan and the land use of valley agriculture. This project was be, was found to be consistent with the applicable Tulare County general plan policies. These, this parcel is also under Williamson Act, and it was found to be consistent with Williamson Act. Project was noticed according to the law, and staff has not received any comments regarding the project. The site is located on the west side of Road 52, approximately one half mile north of Avenue 416. And that's northwest of Dinuba. And the site is zoned AE20, which is an exclusive agricultural zone, 20 acre minimum, and it contains the fruit packing facility, a residence, and several accessory structures. The surrounding properties are all zoned AE20 and contain orchards and scattered rural residences. Aerial view. This is a 7,500 square foot fruit packing facility. This parcel also contains a storage shed and residence. The facility has been at this location since May 1991, and the applicant only recently learned that he needed a special use permit. They have been very cooperative throughout this process and are intent on bringing the facility into compliance with zoning. Operations at this facility are seasonal, 20 to 30 employees work on the site in one shift, six to 10 hours per day, four to six days per week during the months of May through September and October through December. Up to 40 parking spaces are provided. They are adjacent to the warehouse along the driveway which is surfaced with decomposed granite. The equipment utilized is a Durand Wayland scizer, and rinse water for the fruit is recycled into the irrigation pipelines. The regional water quality control board was sent a consultation notice, and we have not received any comments regarding the proposal. This is the site plan. And staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission approve the categorical exemption and conditionally approve special use permit number 16-040. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you.
Question?
Yes, please.
Dana, so the owner of this parking house, they're the ones that live in the residence up in the front?
In the residence? Correct.
Thank you.
Dana, I noticed that both this, this particular project and I think the next one, I'm trying to find it, but I read it, so I know must be there. They talk about hazardous materials that you have around a packing house, and just from my own information, what are those acids and some of those things? I mean, the things that they put in the air to hold the fruit so it doesn't ripen as quick, or just what is all that stuff?
Well, that's a health department condition, it's pretty standard. And I'm not sure exactly what the hazardous materials may be. They may be insecticides or herbicides, things like that. And, you know, there are certain quantities that if they store these hazardous materials in those quantities, then they need to get a hazardous materials business plan with the health department.
I understand that, and the ammonia and the argon carb oxide mixture, but there is one, it seemed like there's some acids, I just, just like to hear from the applicant. What do you, what do you use those things for?
Well, let's, let me open the public hearing portion of this, and then we can ask the applicant can speak for, to that issue. Thank you. Thank you for your, is that the only question you had?
No, that's what I have.
Okay. I will now open the public hearing for special use permit PSP 16-040, E&amp;D Farms Incorporated. And, good morning.
Good morning, I'm Eric Lemlin.
If you could please name, speak, say your name, address, please.
My name's Eric Lemlin. The address is 42031, Road 52, in Reedley, California.
Thank you.
To address this question, we are solely a packing facility, so we don't have any fumigation, that's what you're asking, if there's fumigation or hazardous chemicals, or there's no storage where there's ammonia tanks or any of that. So pretty much everything we deal with is food grade, we put a mineral oil to coat the fruit with, we use a, either a chlorine dioxide or a sodium hypochlorite, which is like a bleach that we use to sanitize the fruit before it is packed. And that's all, we don't have any other hazardous materials or...
But what's this, I don't have a problem, I just need an education, this acid, what is that, what is that acid?
Commissioner, can you cite to the exact location where it says acid?
Can't hear me?
No, can you cite to the exact location in the agenda item where it states acid?
Yeah, I'm getting it, I'm getting it. So, here we go, it's page 36, called ETIDRONIC acid.
Are you on the right, right one?
Well, I could be on a different one, I...
I think you're on a different one, Eric.
I think you must be on the next one.
Okay, I'm okay with this.
I couldn't find it.
It was the equivalent of bleach. Excuse me, Chairman, I believe that's Four Star Fruit, so in regards to this, the applicant cannot answer that question.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you have any other comments you'd like to make?
No.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or anything, I'd be happy to explain.
Did you build, did you develop, build this from?
Yes, yes, I did.
So you've been there since 91 and without knowing that you needed a use permit?
Well, my grandpa, I explained earlier, my grandpa started that, and I've taken over once he, right before he passed away, he sold it to me, and we've just continued and been packing and just keep improving and going and went to put solar on the shed, and that's where they mentioned that, oh, I need a use permit. It's like, we've been doing this for three generations here, so whatever we need to do, we're happy to comply.
Well, I'm, you know, we appreciate what you're doing out there, and the fact that Dana indicated that there's been no complaints or no issues with the neighbors tells me that you're...
Yeah, we do a good service for a lot of people, I do work for several of my neighbors and had a very good business for quite a while now.
Right, thank you for your efforts.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations on being three generations of a business and still going to, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this, is there anything the commissioners would like to address?
No, I think they've been doing a good job over the years, so I'd like to make a motion if you don't mind.
Very, thank you.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA, the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14, pertaining to existing facilities, and conditionally approve special use permit PSP 16-040.
I'll second that.
Thank you, could we have the vote, please? Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Pategiano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have 5B, which is a special use permit number PSP 16-033, Four Star Fruit Incorporated, Bloomer Construction. General rule exemption and special use permit number PSP 16-033 to expand an existing cold storage facility on a 28.5 acre portion of a 48.5 acre parcel located in the AE20 exclusive agriculture 20 acre minimum zone. The site is located on the east side of Road 136 approximately 1,743 feet north of Avenue 24, north of Delano. And our contact is April Hill, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Pategiano and Commissioners. I'm April Hill, Planner 3 from County's Planning Branch, and no, I'm sorry, neither I nor the agent know what the editronic acid is used for. I can Google it a little bit later, out of curiosity. Four Star Fruit handles a variety of grapes. In the peak season of July to December, about 80 employees work on the site in two shifts. This is the vicinity map. The site is subject to the Rural Valley Lands Plan and designated for valley agriculture. It's outside any urban development boundary, urban area boundary, or hamlet, development, hamlet boundary. And it's consistent with relevant general plan elements with an approved use permit. The site is in the AE20 zone and, which allows the establishment for curing, processing, packaging of agricultural projects with a use permit. Access is direct from Road 136, which is a minor county maintained road with about 18 foot wide asphalt servicing. Avenue 24 provides access to State Route 99. Maximum 480 average daily trips from, during the peak season, reduced to about 12, to about 20% during the January to June non-peak season. No additional improvements were required by County Public Works. Here's a 2013 aerial of the facility and the surroundings. They contain agriculture vineyards and scattered rural residences to the northwest and south, railroad tracks and State Route 99 to the east, to the, and to the southwest is another cold storage facility. Nearest residence is about 1,300 feet southwest. This site has been used for a cold storage facility for over 50 years. Contains adequate parking, about 125 parking spaces, water storage reservoir, fire hydrant system, landscaping, perimeter fencing, signage. They've got now a new solar panel system for onsite use, and there's a vineyard in the southern portion of the, of the site. It contains improvements that were required by previously approved use permits from 2001, 2005, and 2007. They also have a well that's regulated as a non-community public water system. Here's a view from Avenue, from Road 136 off Avenue 24. A little bit closer. And here's the main entrance. Put in curb and pavement. Here's the aerial from the company website that shows solar panels installed in 2014. With approval of this use permit, the applicant will add about 71,000 square feet of new cold storage corridors and a new guard shack for a richer total of about 368,000 square feet of buildings. Per the applicant, there will be no increase in the number of employees. The expansion will require updated permits from the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, the Regional Water Quality Board, and the State Water Resources Control Board. County Environmental Health will require an updated hazardous materials business plan and the risk management plan. Conditions of approval are included. No impact on biological resources of the area. There's historic occurrences of California jewel flower nearby along the railroad tracks, and kitpox have been documented about a mile, about a mile northeast, but not on the site. Not near any waterways or wetlands. It's not on a bluff or hillside with rocky outcroppings and not likely to contain cultural This project's exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act per the general rule. It does not have the potential to result in significant effect on the environment and will not impact air noise, traffic, or water resources or other resources. Not located in an environmentally sensitive area, surrounded by agriculture and ag-related industries. Public notice was mailed to owners of properties within 300 feet and was published in the Facility Times Delta with a 10-day public comment period. This ends my report. Agent Walter Scott up from Bloomer and Construction is in the audience if you have any questions.
One request here, April, could you go back to the slide that shows the company's aerial? Because I'm noticing on our package here, we don't have an updated aerial that shows the, it was the solar on it. And I'm trying to get a, and I'm looking at the site plan here, so it looks like the new addition's gonna move into that vineyard just, just to the right, or I guess we're to the, above the solar panels, right, and south of the existing building?
Right, it's moving in a few rows.
Uh huh.
Go see. Sorry, wrong way.
Yeah, it looks like it's pretty close to the end of the solar.
Yes.
And then, could you go back to where the solar?
Oops, there we go, right next to each other.
I got an idea now where it's gonna, the footprint's gonna be now?
Yeah, more than a few rows, but, thank you for the question. Any other questions?
Thank you. Your presentation. I will now open the public hearing portion for special use permit number PSP 16-033. Would anyone like to speak in favor of the project? Like to hear from?
Good morning, Walter Scott, Bloomer Construction, 7440 Meany Avenue in Bakersfield. We represent the Four Star Fruit in processing this. Any questions I can answer?
Here's the acid for.
You know, I read that, and I honestly don't know, it's in small amounts, so it could be a cleaning substance, I don't really know.
I don't have a problem with it, it's just that some types of...
I'll just, through the chair, I Googled it. It's used in detergents, water treatment, cosmetics.
Thought it would be in detergent.
What it's used for in the opera, you can Google it, but what, whether to use it for, and Mike answered it. You know, there are some acids like phosphine and, that used to be common in agriculture, and if you get that on you, it's a death sentence. And so, I don't think we use those anymore, but since I'm a city boy, I just need a little education, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to comment at this time? If not, I will close the public testimony portion of this hearing. And do we have any questions from the commission, or? We have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the category exemption with the California SEQA and state SEQA guideline pursuant to Title 14, Section 15, 303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction, conversion, small structure, and conditionally approve the tentative parcel map number PPM 16-027 and waiver of final map.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second that.
Have the vote, please? Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Pategiano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Thank you, that has been carried. I would just like to say, I think this is great, we've had two projects come across for growth in ag, and very nice projects, both of them, so it's very nice to hear that. Move them on their way to success. We have 5C. This is a public hearing, special use permit number PSP 16-006, and final site plan number PSR 15-006, Palmetto Engineering and Land Surveying Incorporated, the Embry Asset Group.
Your person, I'd like to recuse myself.
I, thank you very much.
We'd also like to recuse myself on this project.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'd also like to recuse myself for this project. Is there a reason why they gave me scissors without points on it? You guys intimidated me.
Because they didn't want you to hurt yourself, like you give to elementary school students.
And could I just state for the record that Commissioners Gong, Millies, and Whitlatch recused themselves?
Thank you very much.
You'll have a...
Yes, we still have a quorum, correct? After many emails back and forth. And our contact Dana Metlin is not going to present.
Not today. Good morning, Chairperson Pategiano, Commissioners, I am Aaron Bog, Chief Planner, Tulare County Resource Management Agency. And before you is the mitigated negative declaration, PSP and final site plan review for 15-006, which was continued from February 24th, 2016. This project's milestones include approval by the PRC Project Review Committee back on May of 2015. Planning staff and Dollar General representatives met with the River Islands Homeowners Association on two separate occasions. The first occasion was at the monthly meeting of January 12th, 2015. The Dollar General folks represented their proposal, and the homeowners associations offered feedback, which was incorporated into the design and environmental analysis of the project. After the last Planning Commission meeting, planning staff and Dollar General then utilized the feedback to work with the applicant to further refine the design and to further analyze a project that was already consistent, as staff had found with the zoning and use permit The project site is located on the north side of State Route 190, north of River Islands in the Thule River Development Corridor. The zoning on the project, the site is located in the PDFM Planned Development Foothill Special Mobile Home Zone. At the prop, and the properties to the east, north, and west are all zoned PDFM as well and contain... well, and contain rural residential uses. The property to the south is also zoned PDFM and contains the River Islands subdivision development, which is a large to small lot golf course community. An aerial view of the project site, you can see scattered residences and the large flat plan on which the site resides. Surrounding are the federal building to the west with adjacent direct access to State Route one ninety. Across the street, across one ninety, facing south from the site, views from the River Island development into this site are blocked by the gate, trees, walls, and other homes. Here's a site view of the site itself, looking north. The site is flat and surrounded by light to heavier development on all sides. In this picture, you can see a water tank, you can see the scattered rural residential developments, and you can also see the corporate yard of the federal building on the right-hand side of the picture. Looking west, the site will blend in with the orchard, existing federal building, and the River Island subdivisions, which you can see are fairly well-developed out on both sides of the road. Access to the site already exists, and the improvements will be made to Caltrans standards. The project will also serve to buffer the stark nature of the National Forest Department's parking lot and strikingly white building against the golden and green landscape in the background. The entitlement is found in section eighteen point seven, which requires that a final site plan reviewed and approved or recommended for approval by the planning commission. Also, appendix two of the county zoning policies and procedure states that grocery stores are compatible with neighborhood commercial centers and are allowed in the F-zone upon approval of a special use permit. General Plan Consistency. The project is located in the Tulie Development Corridor of the Foothill Growth Management Plan, and the land use designation is Foothill Mixed Use, of which this project applies. The zoning, site plan, and use permit are all found to be appropriate and consistent with at least eighteen of the applicable Tulare County general plan policies, as you could see before you. And specifically, it's a scenic route, which this project provides all the requirements to meet. Uh, there is planting of native vegetation, a landscaping plan has been provided, there has been proven adequate water and sewer systems, uh, there is private sewage disposal, and those standards are being met by this project. There is a abundance of stormwater retention facilities and detention facility basins on the site. The store itself is nine thousand one hundred square feet. Dollar General is a retail store that sells general merchandise. The edge of the building is set back one hundred feet from the state route in compliance with the scenic corridor provisions. In addition, many concessions were made to the county for the facades of the building. As you can also see, there's a large amount of, uh, the detention basins in the front and back of the project. There is, uh, the parking and drive aisles, which all further buffer it from all the edges of the property, except for its closest to existing development, where the store is located adjacent to the parking lot, corporate area of the federal building. So some of the concessions made, where the front facade was upgraded to fiber cement. The center section of the front facade will be comprised of fiber, fibers, cement exterior lap siding. The periphery of the front facade will be comprised of fiber cement vertical battered joints, battened joints, and the stacked stone will line the bottom of the front facade to a height of three feet, six inches around the public side of the building, which will also better fit in the areas nearby to the Springville community. So here's some sectional views of the, profile views of the building itself, talking about the battened joints and the stacked stone. So it's not your typical Dollar General store anymore. These were all concessions made to the county and through those meetings with the homeowners association. So there's been quite a bit of, uh, back and forth already occurring on this project. So here's a rendering of what the Dollar General store will look like in relationship to the surrounding landscape. You can see it's set back by at least a hundred feet, and that's to the front corner, the rest of the building is set back even further. You can see there will be native vegetation, especially in those one-half foot, one and one-half foot detention basins in the front, so they'll be, and be treated more like wetlands. Um, and you can also see there's quite a large requirement for landscaping around the project to further shield the building. It is noted that the, here's another rendering from the southeast corner. It is noted that the natural gray, beigeish, brown earth tones blend well with the native yellow beige landscape. Even the accents on the building and asphalt areas along the paved plains do not starkly disrupt the flow of the setting or vista. Here, the vertical wall treatments, the fiber cement vertical battened joints seen against the pitch dawning, and the stacked stone front landscape are meant to create a rustic setting that is further amplified by the large setbacks and in contrast to the neighboring federal building. Which you can see to the, the far right side of the picture. Landscaping. Staff requested and the applicant provided a landscaping plan. The landscaping plan will be compliant with the water-efficient landscaping ordinance of the county. Of note, as an added amenity and concession by the applicant, the front detention basins are being landscaped with trees and native grasses to further soften and screen the building. The detention basin is approximately one point five feet in depth, is gently sloped, and will be hydro-seated. As stated, the landscaping plan complies with the county's model water efficiency landscape ordinance, as you can see from these water use calculations. The trees are drought tolerant and include species of Zalcova, which is in the elm tree family, pistachio trees, and crepe myrtles, and include drought-tolerant shrubs and ground cover, including native manzanita, and species of rosemary, and fortnight lilies, which are hardy and suitable to the climate. Furthermore, the applicant's landscaping plan will be required to comply with the Caltrans standards as the project is adjacent to SR one ninety. Also, a landscaping maintenance plan must be approved by Caltrans. But we didn't stop there. There were further concessions made by Dollar General to this point, from their typical pylon sign you could see in the middle. The sign for the store will incorporate the same stacked stone that is utilized, utilized around the base of the structure, so similar to the upper left and right lower pictures. So you can see the stacked stone against the Dollar General sign. Lighting. All lighting will be hooded, down shielded, and will be appropriate for maintaining a dark sky perspective. So therefore, implementing conditions of approval regarding facades, landscaping, lighting, and complying with the Caltrans landscaping maintenance requirements, impacts to the aesthetic resources will be minimized. In addition, uh, typically, we get a will serve letter that says, we, the irrigation district or water district, will serve this project, but we didn't stop there. We wanted to verify that this project could receive the adequate amount of water from the irrigation district. So, uh, and I could read this language to you, based upon the parameters provided by the Embree Design Group, five fixtures with an average day demand of a hundred and seventy-five gallons per day to be utilized over a period of thirteen hours, the calculated instantaneous demand for the proposed project is calculated at approximately point two-two gallons per minute. Accordingly, please be advised that the River Island system has sufficient production of six hundred and fourteen gallons per minute to supply the current two thousand fifteen maximum day systems demand of approximately four hundred and twenty gallons per minute, plus the point two-two gallons per minute of the proposed Dollar General, Dollar Store Springville project. So there is adequate water supply. And with that, I'll turn it over to Hector Guerra, our chief environmental planner, chief environmental planner for Tulare County.
One question. So their landscaping will have no irrigation?
They'll have irrigation, it's just a matter of the calculation meets our model water efficiency landscape ordinance. So it's, it's, it's drought tolerant plants, but it's not, uh, zero irrigation, no.
Okay.
And that's not a requirement.
Yeah, goes into that point two-two gallon per minute?
That does.
Okay.
And I'm Chairmembers of the Planning Commission, my name's Hector Guerra, Chief Environmental Planner, as mentioned by Aaron. What I want to do is, is go over the SEQA issues that were raised and summarize them, just so everybody has an understanding of how we evaluate SEQA and, and what thresholds we have to meet, or what standards we have to meet, what evidence has to be provided, how our argument is formatted, the, basically saying, here is my argument, here is why this complies with SEQA. Will it have impacts? Certainly. Will they be mitigated to a level of insignificance? In our judgment, professional judgment experience, they will. Will there be changes to the aesthetics? Ya betcha. You know, will there be traffic increases? A little bit. So we're gonna go through these things, and we're gonna address some of this stuff. And again, you know, we provide the evidence versus something that might be speculative or, or hearsay. Please don't view this as an attack on anyone who may think, oh, they're different from us because of this. No. You know, this is, uh, our argument, if you want to call it, in that this is why SEQA is, is satisfied. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and go through the presentation. As you can see on the slide, there were additional water, biological, cultural, geology, and traffic studies done or memos. And to make it brief, instead of calling it the initial study mitigated negative declaration, I'm just gonna call it the MND. The MND was circulated to all state agencies that could comment. Now, we send this to the State Clearing House, uh, and they're the ones who, we put a little box and say, please send it to Caltrans, please send it to US Fish and Wildlife, please send it to CAL FIRE, whomever may be a, a potential responding agency. So we did that. We received comments back from Caltrans, and we received two sets of comments, but the, the, the second set was actually a ver, uh, verification that the first set is, is, is indicative of what they're going to say. There were no changes, and it had some design changes that were incorporated into, or the initial consultation that we had with them. We also did something that is new to SEQA relatively speaking, it's called tribal consultation. Uh, there was, and I'll go over that a little bit more detail, because this is a really, really important new addition to the SEQA process. We did three notification efforts to twenty tribes, and, uh, we only see one response. So that opportunity was provided, and even then, it was the Table Mountain Rancheria, which indicated it was outside of the area interest. If anybody gets familiar with Table Mountain Rancheria, that's in Fresno County. So it goes out to not only Tulare County, but it also goes to, to Madera County, Fresno County, Kern County, Kings County. So we do cover a really large geographic areas, which you, what you gotta do now, because you, you're looking at the cultural, historical, and geographic extent of what the tribes may be from. So with that, uh, the tribal consultation, it is compliant with what we call AB fifty-two. You know, that is the state legislation, and, uh, next slide, please. And, uh, basically what we did is, again, we consulted, we sent out the consultation, we did, we requested a, a search, what's called sacred lands file search by the Native American Heritage Commission. They found no record of any sacred lands out there, but it doesn't stop there. You know, they will later tell us, please notify the localized tribes to see if you have more information on that. So we did, and we sent certified mail to the fourteen tribes that the NAHC asked us to. We included the AB fifty-two consultation request, project description, and a map of the project location, so they get a feel for where the map is. If they wanted more information, we're glad to provide that to them. We received no, no responses to the consultation requests from these tribes. So we did a second notification. Now, this is typical in SEQA, we release, uh, the notice of availability of the MND, letting everyone else, state agencies, local folks, advertising in the paper, the tribes, you know, that it's available. We also included a website link. So, uh, again, certified mail. And typically, we don't send certified mail unless it's, it's, it's requested by someone or tribal consultation, that's new. So again, we received no responses from the tribes for the, for the notice of availability of an MND. We did a third notification. This one again is, is, now the NAHC says, you know, thank you for this sacred land files request. Here are six new contacts, not six new tribes, six new contacts, because some of them are duplicative. So per the recommendation, we sent out the consultation to those, to those contacts, and, uh, again, an opportunity to consult on the project, our project description, maps of the project, the website link, whole thing reiterated again. Again, we received no requests for consultations, uh, and then, and again, just to reiterate, Table Mountain Rancheria was the only one who responded, basically saying, uh, they had no comment because it's beyond their project, uh, or geographic area of interest. Now, the next slide, and I won't read all of these tribes, because I'll just rip them to pieces in trying to pronunciate them, but we, uh, if you look at the one column, the request for August ninth, and the other column for August sixteenth, you can see there's a bunch of tribes that are localized in our area, like, uh, and, and in our vicinity, Santa Rosa Rancheria, the Tachi Yoka Tribe, one of the more sophisticated tribes that has a lot of resources, who we've had had a consultation with on a different project, you know, they, they, they did not reply to that. The Tulie River, River Indian Tribe, the Woodlake Tribes, uh, and just a bunch of tribes. But, and again, you know, no one responded to the, uh, or we didn't receive any requests for consultation from any of the tribes. We didn't get any responses to the NOA MND, and we, we made that effort, and we feel we're complying with AB fifty-two. Now, that's important, because if you don't go through that compliance process, you cannot certify your decision-making body, whether it's the planning commission or the board, by law cannot certify an environmental document. You just can't do it. You have to go through this process. So we've embraced that, and we, you know, we're working as best we can. It's still a learning process, and we're trying to get it down pat, so as we notify the tribes, you know, they can come back to us if they want to have a consultation. So the next one has to do with our response to traffic now. The applicant is-
Hector, could I stop you a second before you go on to traffic?
Sure.
Was the Archaeo Clearing House at Cal State Bakersfield notified?
The, for the Chris search?
For the record search.
For the record search? I believe it was.
Yes, yes, correct.
I don't recall every single detail, Mr. Elliot.
So a letter was sent to them, asking them to comment on the project?
Right, right, right. And, and what they're gonna say, what they typically will say is that there's no evidence that he, he, there's a, there's a record out there, no one's admitted a, a record, but that's not to say that you can't find subsurface. If you find a subsurface, then of course, we do have conditions of approval and mitigations that are, are saying, stop what you're doing, bring in the experts, and then we'd give them clearance, proceed.
But routinely, they would provide a document and say there are sites that have been recorded nearby?
They would typically, I, I identify sites by number, but they won't release it because of confidentiality.
But did you, you get a response from them?
I can't recall the whole record. Did we get a response from the Chris folks?
I believe we did, and I believe there wasn't a, two, because we did a full cultural report, which is in the MND, um, so there was no sites located.
I think it was in a mile or so.
Yeah, and, and that's a good point. They typically will tell you, it's typically half mile to a mile if they, if there's a record out there, and if there's none, they're gonna let us know. And again, just a caveat, if there's no culturally reported archaeological or historical sites, doesn't mean there aren't, they aren't out there, but we did have a consultant do that historical background search, and couldn't find anything anyway.
Well, routinely, when you look at, you know, undeveloped land, there wouldn't be a survey out there prior to a reason to do the survey, and a project like this might be that reason, so I'm just wondering what their response was.
Correct. And, and again, it's, 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 there's no record of it. That's, that's what they're saying. If there's a record of it, they're gonna let us know. And, uh, Caltrans also does these things, and, and they had no records of it either, so that, it's a redundancy, but that's okay. You know, we, we like to think we did our due diligence in going through that, that effort. Thank you. So traffic, there were concerns there, again, the applicants indicated there'll be approximately thirty-five peak AM trips, uh, and sixty-two peak PM trips. So such, this project doesn't exceed the one hundred trip, uh, peak hour trip recommended, recommended by the Tulare County General Plan and Tulare County Association of Governments, that would trigger the need for a study. It's just not that traffic at peak hours. Again, the, the intent of this project is to capture pass-by slash pass-through traffic. It is, it's not gonna result in, in, in a large amount of traffic being generated within the vicinity, the, the- The intent of their business plan is to capture pass-through traffic. Also, it should be noted that Caltrans did not require a traffic study even though it's on their state route, SR 190. The Dollar General, though, will be required to install westbound deceleration lane and an eastbound left-turn lane. And Caltrans, as possible, by the way, envisions that over time, this segment of SR 190 is going to be widened to a four-lane conventional highway. So over time, it will grow regardless of our plans. They just envisioned that to happen over time. When that timeframe is, I don't know, you know? Also, traffic has been demonstrated that the project will not exceed vehicle trip thresholds. And traffic controls, again, the deceleration lanes and the turn lane by Caltrans's recommendation will be required. The project would not have a direct or cumulative significant impact on transportation or the traffic resources. Now, the issue was raised on local business property values, which I can appreciate. But we want to go through this summary to let you know how we evaluate that per CEQA. CEQA does not analyze economic impacts unless it is clearly demonstrated that a project would result in a physical change in the environment. No evidence was presented and it would be speculative at best. Now, the next slide, let me go to the rationale of why we conclude this. The commenter has not provided any evidence to demonstrate devaluation of property values. And without that evidence, the comment is considered speculative and does not meet the CEQA definition of substantial evidence. Per CEQA Guideline, Section 15384A, it states that argument, speculation, unsubstantiated opinion or narrative, evidence which is clearly erroneous or inaccurate, or evidence of social or economic impacts which do not contribute to or are not caused by physical impacts on the environment, does not constitute substantial evidence. And there's a little bit more, you know, again with the property values. Section 15384B states substantial evidence shall include facts, reasonable assumptions predicated upon facts, expert opinion supported by facts. And moreover, moreover, excuse me, the economic impact must manifest in an environmental impact backed by substantial evidence and must make a showing that the reduced property values result in an impact to the environment. As an example, there's a Walmart case in Bakersfield that it said would result in blight if it were to the downtown area, if it were to occur there. And that was substantiated by a market study that showed what impact may be happening, maybe occurring because of a project. So that clearly shows we have an economic study here, we have a market study. Yes, this Walmart is going to impact us. So that demonstrates a physical change in the environment. Other than that, without this type of expert study, there's no evidence to substantiate the claim that it will result in devalued property values or result in blight. The aesthetics, we've gone through this already, Mr. Bakish on a variety of slides, showing conceptual drawings, showing heights, showing colors, just a whole lot of stuff wherein, he also mentions that it's set back about 100 feet. So it's not going to be right up at the front of the road. An important thing to remember too is the Caltrans requirement. You know, Caltrans requires that, because it's the longest state route, they approve the landscape plan and it's got to be well-maintained landscape. They have concerns about people driving and merging into traffic or coming through the roadway and not being clearly seen. So they do have a limitation on that and this project will comply with it, yet at the same time provide aesthetically pleasing landscape. Now, again, we mentioned it has a project design features and materials that blend into the landscape and resemble the existing non-residential building, height limitations, setbacks, landscaping with native grasses and other vegetation that's compatible. The lighting control features such as the hooding, the light angle, and the lumens, the brightness of the lights. The proposed store will not be similar in appearance to other Dollar General stores in Tulare County. The applicant has been receptive to design features consistent with the theme of the community. Another concern that was raised was the site is currently used from time to time by California Department of Forestry or the US Forest Service for firefighting efforts. While we did a follow-up call, we talked to my planner, Timothy Bailey, Planner for Forest, spoke with Mr. Eric Laprise, the District Ranger for the Western Divide Park Ranger District of the Sequoia National Forest. They indicated that the private property owners determine the ability of the forest to use private property for forest purposes. Mrs. Laprise indicated that based on its location, the proposed project site could act as a suitable helicopter landing site in time of need. Also, spoke to another person, Mr. Bailey did, is Mr. Brent Skaggs. He is at FMO, the Fire Management Officer of the Sequoia National Forest. He indicated that the site has indeed been used as a point to shuttle personnel in and out of the ranger station and for fire reconnaissance missions. It has never been used as a fire suppression role. So it does play a role and they do have, they did have that opportunity to use it through the consent of the private property owner. FMO Skaggs also noted that the Sequoia National Forest has permission from a private property owner to use a private airfield off the Balch Park Road. As such, the FMO Skaggs indicated that using the proposed site would not result in an adverse impact in their abilities to perform their duties. So that pretty much concludes my CEQA responses. I'm glad to elaborate more if anybody else has new concerns that are raised, but that concludes my component of the presentation.
Commissioners, at this point, this concludes staff's presentation, but the applicant would also like to make a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation. So I would suggest, if there is any discussion, to have that, but to open up the public hearing so the applicant can also present to you.
Okay.
Very good presentation.
So I will now open the public hearing portion of this so that our applicant can, one moment. So the applicant can make a statement?
Morning Commissioners.
Your name and address, please.
John Shields, Embry Asset Group, 2355 East Cantaloupe Back Road, Phoenix, Arizona. All right, just to give you a history of Dollar General. It's a small box retailer. It's not a grocery store. We are founded out of Tennessee. We have almost 12,000 stores nationwide. They're all convenient sized locations. They're not large buildings. And we have 12 distribution centers coast to coast to supply those stores. Our merchandise is national and private brand, so you can see anything in there that you would see at a larger store, but at a competitive price.
One moment, one moment, and you'll have a chance to ask that question. Thank you.
Got any teenagers out there?
Technical difficulty.
Is there a seven-year-old in the audience, please?
My son could do it.
Feeds a teenager. Looks like one, isn't it?
Yes, he does.
He's an engineer.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Dollar General accepts all manufacturing store coupons, so any coupons that you would use anywhere else, you could use the Dollar General. Customers are, in our opinion, are value-conscious and convenience-seeking. The store is, in our opinion, a convenience issue as well. Instead of having to travel all the way to Porterville for their goods, we believe that they can, it's a much shorter travel distance to the proposed Dollar General site. And again, we are nationwide. So Dollar General's been around for over 75 years, started in Tennessee and has grown over the years to again about 12,000 stores, employing well over 100,000 employees nationally. And those are full-time and part-time positions. So the mission of Dollar General is convenience, quality, and great prices. And the employees, it's respect and opportunity. It is a publicly traded company, so the shareholders, it's a superior return for them. We do have stores that are open to Tulare County at this time and they're doing quite well. We are very pleased with the results of those particular locations. And we believe that for communities, it's a better life, you know, it's convenience and it's also, you know, a very competitive pricing. And so who Dollar General is, is, and just for the record, I work for Embry, we're a preferred developer for Dollar General. I am not Dollar General. I am one of their preferred developers in the California area. Who Dollar General is, is today's neighborhood general store, serving the needs of our customers by providing convenience, value, and service every day. So I won't go into too much detail about all that, but Dollar General does provide a literacy foundation program for illiteracy and it's something that they develop, their main stores, it's a personal issue for them. And they donate, and it only was within a certain radius of the store, so everything is strictly in that community. So they do provide that and there are grants that are provided by the National Corporation. Again, this is a little more about the literacy program and everything, all of this is online. And just also for the record, the local stores do also their own donations on a store-by-store basis. It's not a national thing, it's more of a local and there's various ways for them to do that and you can talk to any store manager and they all participate in a local program. And distribution center is local in California, so they won't be traveling long distances to supply the store. And in California, we currently have fewer than 150 stores, but they are trying to make a move in California because we believe this is a very viable market for Dollar General and we believe it's a need. And again, we, I think one of the questions was what national brands do we carry? These are some of them right here. There are quite a few, you know, national brands that they do carry. We are not, again, we are not a grocery store. We do not sell produce or any kind of meats or anything like, anything that's... Most perishable items are not sold there, although they do sell milk products. So this is the interior of the stores, very clean, very simple. Again, this is cold storage here, or cold sales. Health and beauty. And then if anyone's interested in getting ahold of Dollar General, that's the contact information. I can certainly provide that after this meeting. And I just have on here for talking purposes, site plan, the landscape plan. Landscape plan with the plants that are proposed. The architect's elevations and a couple of different perspectives. I think that's the one you saw earlier, but this is a different perspective. That's the forest building right there. We do believe that this building is compatible with the area. It blends in. Staff was very helpful in helping us redesign this building. We do believe that this is a quality product and we believe that it will be a nice addition to the scenic corridor. I think this was passed out to everybody?
Thank you.
The features and benefits of Dollar General provides a much-needed service and convenience for local residents. Will minimize driving time to, or driving trips to Porterville. Dollar General provides a wide range of reasonably priced food and household and office products. Prior to opening, Dollar General will look for local subs to help construct the store. And once it's opened, they do provide full-time and part-time jobs. There's two shifts during the day, so depending on the needs, they could employ up to eight to 12 people per day. And upon opening, the Dollar General will generate tax revenue, we believe, for the community, just as the other stores have. As far as site landscaping and the building, Dollar General's landscaping and building architectural design are compatible with the foothill topography. And we believe it will be a minimal impact to the surrounding mountain and scenic views. The Dollar General's building design is compatible with the adjacent US, with the architecture of the US Forest Service headquarters next door to the east. The Dollar General site has been designed to provide safe and efficient ingress egress from Highway 190, as stated earlier, with, as we also coordinated that with Caltrans, which includes the construction of deceleration lane and the lengthening or the, I guess, the completion of the left-turn lane into the site. The Dollar General building inside are designed to be energy-efficient and water-conscious. All of our landscaping will be drought tolerant. There is irrigation. It's all drip irrigation. And the retention areas are hydro-seeded. Those are not irrigated. And we believe its minimal impact to natural resources is our primary goal. The Dollar General project complies with all county zoning and development codes and regulations. The site carries a permitted commercial use designation as it currently stands. The project site has been studied by various professional consultants, so there have been some extensive studies done. This project satisfies all biological and wetland criteria and provides for recommended mitigation preservation measures. Dollar General's building and layout are compatible with the aesthetics of the various businesses currently existing along Highway 190 and the Road 176 corridor by enhancing the area with the tasteful rustic design. The long-term viability of this project, Dollar General does extensive studies in their corporate office through marketing and development and has conducted extensive site due diligence and has determined the site for long-term financial feasibility with results justifying this particular project location. My understanding is that the property owner desires to develop the overall property per the general plan guidelines with allowed uses compatible with existing zoning designations. And our understanding is that the county planning commission's primary responsibilities and duties are to rule on land use and county code, follow existing zoning laws, administer all existing elements of the general plan, and ensure public safety and welfare are preserved. And in conclusion, I'd just like to say we feel that with staff's help, we have complied with the county requirements and intend on providing a quality, safe, aesthetically pleasing, much-needed project that we feel will enhance this very beautiful and scenic highway corridor. Thank you for your time.
Brock, do you have something else to say?
Well, just to further answer Commissioner Elliott's question, yes, there was a full cultural resources survey done by the Salem Engineering Group through Christina Roper. And there was a Chris research study done and there was no, as you stated, numbered sites located on this site. So yes, both those things were completed in the field through the research.
Was, is this, I mean, I, you know, Googled my zip code for Dollar General and I got 12 stories. Is this the first one that's built in a rural setting outside a community?
By knowledge, it would be the first one outside of an urban development boundary, but our development corridors are similar in nature to UDBs as to what we allow. So yes, it's urban to our mind within the FTMP, but, you know, generally speaking, unless you have something to add, Mike, as far as...
No, I, the other locations, I believe, are within urban development boundaries, but the corridor, development corridor is much akin to the same procedure or policies, so.
I know the closest one to me...
It's the first one in the foothills. Let's just say that. It's the first one out of the valley floor.
The closest one to me is Woodlake and it's 11.5 miles.
Do we have anyone else that would like to make a statement? Please come up and state your name and address. Thank you.
So I'm a classic mumbling, so go like this so I know you can hear me or not. My name is Michael Corcoran. I live at 35385 Leonard Avenue, Leonard Road in Springville. That's at Ward Avenue near the school. So I come from a little piece of history. My father-in-law had Lawrence's Grocery Store in the 20s. My father-in-law had Lawrence's Grocery Store in the twenties, before the Depression, in the Elster Building. He was coming there when it was daunt, so before it was even Springville. So I've seen history in his home, that's 77 years old. And what I'd like to point out to you is, in my term on the Springville Public Utility District, I took the same oath that you all have three times. Understand the responsibility. And my main argument today is not for or against, I'm just asking you to consider the fact, although the staff has done an adequate job, there's questions. The developer is not Dollar General, they're the developer. So the question the community really have is, what's wrong with more information? They would come from an environmental impact report. So, traffic studies, the environmental considerations, the community is a resource for Tulare County. I had an adequate time last month to study for two hours, the historical maps, because there weren't enough gentlemen and ladies to vote on the measure here. That is a huge resource for Tulare County. You know there, I'm sure you've all been up 190 through the Springville community, it's a long ways. There's 2,800 households. As part of the Springville Public Utility Commission, we did the study required by law, spent the money to study the economics of the area, so I was an early letter writer to the Resource Management Group, asking, "Why Dollar General?" It's not a grocery store. Okay, okay, what is it? So we've got this area that's marked out with renderings, showing the foothills in the background. What about the rest of the property? When Mr. Montgomery came up and developed the golf course, huge asset. Today, we have different measures, and your responsibility is different today than it was when Montgomery came through. Oh, let's not forget the railroad that was up into Springville when it was daunt. Let's not forget the 17 lumber mills that were there that are no longer there. So these are things that we're to decision today. I implore you to take your responsibility very more seriously, and consider that what we decide today changes those maps that are in the lobby. It changes the 2,800 households, the economics of the whole area. I'm not talking about the cost of milk or the trips to Porterville. We certainly associate with Porterville, our kids go to school there, we're a resource, we're refuge, but also the travelers that come up the highway. A long time ago, it was a scenic highway. I think the retention of those qualities is more important than convenience for shopping for milk, I really do, or detergent, or household goods, or goods basically brought in from foreign manufacturing. I don't see the building as complying with the environment there, I really don't. I'd like to go ahead and pass it to the secretary and show you. I can't hear him.
I'm sorry, you have to go back to the, thank you.
What we count is the white spot in the road, which is the heart of the community. People that are along that highway, it's historic, 1912. The Wilkinson Building, the brick buildings, we call it, the Elster Building. Those are the elements that I call Springville, that attracts people to go up and down that highway, that contribute to the economy of the county, both for living and rural. It's rural, not urban. I don't think it'll ever be urban, because there's no water. The river runs through it, Springville above the clouds. Okay, it's not going to be that way. It's California the way it used to be. So let's look at this for more information, so you can really make the judgment. So when your grandchildren go up that highway to the National Park, the National Forest, the National Monument, to the County Park, they can leave behind the image of seeing a sign on the road that says they can buy soda. Come on. So that's the end of my comments. Those are pictures of downtown Springville as it was a long time ago. That's what the community is asking for, and I think the other speakers bring up some of the emotional part, but whenever we have a decision that impacts us as a community, we get together up there. So I'd love to meet the people from Dollar General and just find out what's their concept. I totally respect the company, I think it's well-managed. It has a contribution, certainly in urban areas, not rural. So I just ask you to take time. There's four votes, I think you should vote unanimously, either it's an up or a down. But if it's a down or an up, I think you need more information. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you very much.
I'll take the pictures back, you have to have a chance to glass, and come up to Springville.
I can't keep these? They're really nice. Pictures from Lawrence and Irene Unser?
Yeah.
Are there areas that are shown in those pictures today that are vacant, there are vacant buildings?
Maybe I'm not hearing anyone.
Are there areas in those cityscapes, you know, through Springville, are there vacant buildings there?
I wrote that question, are there pictures?
Well, the pictures you have, if you fast-forward to today. Are there vacant storefronts and commercial buildings in Springville today?
The answer would be directly yes, there's space in that Ulster Building, there's spaces all along the highway there. And the question that we have is, you know, if it was a really good idea to build a store next to the Forest Service, you know, Town and Country would have done a long time ago.
Thank you.
So the answer is yes. There's plenty of space in Springville for a commercial development, and we're not against development, we're just asking for more reasons.
Thank you. Yes.
Good morning, Commissioner, members of the staff. My name is Brad Dunlap. My wife and I own a business in downtown Springville, 35575 Highway 190. Happen to also live in Springville, 35841 Rio Vista. And I come to you with a decent amount of background in planning, and a concern over the project, and primarily the location. And I want to give you an answer to Commissioner Elliott's question. One of my major concerns is that we have a multitude of vacancies in downtown Springville. And while none of them would be considered to be stereotypical for a Dollar General store, there are nonetheless a significant number of vacancies. The hardware store that was shown in Mr. Corcoran's photograph has sat vacant the entire time my wife has had her hair salon in downtown, which is 11 years. Springville, the Springville Inn is empty, it's under renovation, hopefully going to open back up. But I will tell you that part of my responsibility when I was in the public sector was economic development. And, you know, we got caught up in the craziness of the overwhelming analysis of a Walmart supercenter, and what that brought to bear. I also attended ICSC, and we met with Dollar General and Family Dollar just in conversation. It was, I think it was three years ago, and they said, "Hey, we're not on the West Coast, we're on our way." And at that time, it was three-dollar generals, or four-dollar generals and three-dollar, man, four-dollar generals and three family dollars that they wanted to put in Porterville at the time. And so, you know, everybody's racing to the finish line, everybody has to bring back return on investment to their investors. And, you know, here we have a foothill community that is struggling to stay viable. We have an urban development boundary with a plan for development. We have a new county general plan, which, you know, I'm not criticizing staff, but it's extremely hard to decipher, it's extremely hard to determine where and what type of development is going to occur. So now we've got this merger up there in Springville of the community development boundary of Springville, and this foothill growth management plan, and a scenic highway that is kind of this fiber that runs through that. And so, my position, very clearly in my mind, is, this is the wrong site. I don't care personally about whether Dollar General returns a great investment to their investors, I'm not one. And there are places for it, you can drive through the Midwest, all through the country, and in the middle of nowhere, there are Dollar General stores, serving a purpose. I will tell you that if a Dollar General or another store is approved on the periphery of downtown Springville, it will indeed continue to erode the viability of Springville, it will. And I will tell you right now, the place that serves the purpose of convenience in Springville is Gifford's Market. And I'm not here to promote Gifford's Market, per se, but I will tell you that not only is that a place of commerce, but it is a community center, it is a meeting center, it's a place where the community comes in contact with one another on an ongoing basis. I can go there any given day, and I can see people that I haven't seen in weeks, or I can see people that I saw yesterday. And so while it does provide a convenience to all of us in Springville, it also provides, which is immediately adjacent to the downtown park in Springville, it also provides a sense of place. My wife was in a building prior to the one she's in now, and she's followed vacancies. She actually, she started working for a salon in the Elster Building, and they closed. And then she went into another vacant building, and then went into the building that she's in now, which is a historic building that was vacated by the prior business. And there are multiple businesses in downtown that are either vacant and have been for years, or are now being transitioned into residences, which takes away from the vitality of downtown as well, when the street frontage becomes residential. That's the global. I have major concerns with the placement of Dollar General, not so much that it is Dollar General, and I have great concerns over what it will do to Springville in the long run. And I do have some comments that I want to get through here, and I will try and respect the commission's time and get through them quickly. I said that locating any new commercial business outside of the Springville UDB is a concern, and I'll let that stand. Any new commercial business and development in areas in close proximity to the UDB should be integrated into the community and take advantage of comprehensively-designed and managed sewer and water. I know they're proposing water service from Del Oro, which will be an extension across the freeway or highway. We're now approving commercial development on a septic system, so why not extend the sewer? But my argument primarily is, why not take a look at Springville and determine whether the boundaries of Springville's urban development area and urban area boundary should be expanded to accommodate coming down to Fraser Valley Road, or wherever a logical extension point may be to. Parceling off a small portion, which is 1.3 acres of an over 28-acre site, is piecemeal development. It's short-sighted from a planning standpoint, and will only result in comprehensively, and will not result in a comprehensively-designed development or community. It'll also result in interruption to traffic flow. We already have accidents that occur in downtown Springville, and the speed limit is 25 miles an hour. I know Caltrans indicated that there should be a deceleration lane into the site. I think it's worthy of further discussion whether there should be an acceleration lane out of the site. Vehicles are already up to the 55 mile an hour speed limit at the time they reach the site moving westerly on the highway. There should be some consideration for that, and making sure that Caltrans really knows the site like we residents know the site. And Caltrans does a great job engineering, so I'm not trying to rip on them, it's just, we know what goes on there, and it would be beneficial to ask that question. Caltrans also indicated that there's only one site access allowed for this development. There's been no consideration that I can find in the record given to a reciprocal access easement between the 1.3-acre site and the remaining 27-acre site to deal with what's going to happen in the future. Now is the time to do it. Embry is a developer, they're clearly buying the 1.3 acres from Meek. You can't grant an easement to yourself, but you can certainly grant and address the issue of global access at an early stage in development. And it takes nothing more than a condition of approval for sharing ingress and egress between parcels. And that way, we can limit the number of access points. This is one place on the highway from just east of this site down to below the dam, where we really don't have a proliferation of driveways accessing the highway. But we will, we will. I told our representative on the Board of Supervisors, I've told county staff, probably not these guys, because it's changed over, but if we want to keep doing what we're doing, let's just drive down to LA and see how enjoyable this is. That's what's going to happen, we're going to fragment the development along the highways, you're going to restrict the flow of movement of traffic, we're going to, like, we call them chiclets. We're going to put chiclets, stack them along the highway, and you're going to have driveways coming in and out all the way down, and we're going to wonder why traffic doesn't flow, why the rural scenery in Tulare County no longer is appealing to us and doesn't even exist. We have a chance in 2016 to not continue to proliferate the things that we've done in the past. Aaron Drew drew direct relationship to the Forest Service Building. Yeah, it exists, it was a federal project. I don't know how much oversight the county had on it, but don't use one bad example of a white building in a rural context to say, to legitimize what we want to do. Caltrans commented, I made that statement, the overall site at the northeast corner of State Highway 190 and Road 320 is an ideal location and application of a master plan development, or planned community area per the foothill growth management plan. Your policies in the general plan and the foothill growth management plan promote master planning. I've referenced those in here, I don't see it right away. Now we have this dichotomy. We have a parcel map that apparently the Planning Commission has already approved, waiting for the development to be approved. In my world of environmental planning and current planning, that's what we call parceling off or separating out projects, dividing projects under SEQA. You can't, if the project is being precipitated by the parcel map, you cannot take action on the parcel map without considering the entirety of the project. That is dividing the project under SEQA. You can't approve a parcel map by a categorical exemption when it has a direct relationship with a project that you processed and mitigated NIGDEC with. I'm sorry, I would have loved to do that for almost 30 years of my career. It doesn't work legally. That's my opinion, I'm not an attorney. The archaeological and biological surveys tie into this. So we've got this 28-acre site that the parcel mapped is the subject of. 1.3 acres is the development site for the Dollar General. Now we've tailored our archaeological and our biological surveys on 1.3 acres instead of 28 acres. We have found this spiny seeple button celery. I don't know if seepled is the right pronunciation, I can pronounce celery, though. So we found this, right? So then, there's a protocol survey that's done to determine whether or not, within a five-mile radius, there's an active enough community of these plants to not diminish the habitat. And so, the findings of the biological surveys show that less than 10% of the plants exist on this project site. But it's identifying a whole bunch more. That's on the 1.3 acre, there's 300 and some-odd plants, there's 7,300 plants entirely in the five-mile radius. What happens when you now consider the 28 acres that has wetlands on it, that has two historic mill sites either on it or adjacent to it that aren't qualified, that was your answer earlier? Yes, they did get a response from the Office of Archaeological. In Bakersfield, there's two historic mill sites north of this project site, neither of them qualify for state or historic listing, a state or federal historic listing, and there's another one or two on the other side of the highway. But now, we're analyzing the 1.3 acres instead of the 28. Our whole methodology for determining that there's no impacts of spiny seeple... methodology for determining that there's no impacts of spiny seepled button celery are probably null and void and inaccurate at the least. So, um, I would contend that you can't evaluate the 1.3 acres when you're parceling it off. You're, you're subdividing the land. It's the whole site. Mr. Box said last meeting, uh, on a side conversation that, you know, there's no proposed development for the remainder of the site. You have to apply the general plan build out. I don't mean this i- in any disrespect to the commission, but with your general plan, I don't know how you're going to do that either, because I don't know how you say what's going to be built, because you can do anything with a special use permit. So, but you have to consider the growth implications of dividing the site, and now the next parcel that's going to be, um, created has to be considered as well. Um, the project continued, and the presentation continued to make the, to recognize the existence of the scenic corridor, to, um, address the fact with special consideration to the building elevations, landscaping, uh, dark sky lighting. Not a single one of those is considered in, as an aesthetics mitigation measure. And if there's already been plans considered, this is, this is my world of planning for 30 years. When you have a special use permit, you can ask for the information you need to determine that you're making the best decision with all of the facts and all of the information on behalf of the county. You can pin it down. Do you normally require landscaping plans as a part of your special use permits? Maybe you don't, but when it's of utmost importance to a project, you have every right to request that information and pin it down. When you have a special consideration given to advertising and to building architecture, there's obviously been plenty of discussion. There's conditions of approval that try and describe it, but a picture speaks a thousand words. Why aren't any of the plans that have supposedly been prepared a part of the record and incorporated into the, into the, uh, conditions of approval in more specific terms? Section 8.13 of the Foothill Growth Management Plan calls for native landscaping to be used. I think you've addressed that, although I don't think crepe myrtles and Chinese pistachio are native, um, species of trees, particularly in California, I guess. Um, yeah, I'm not going to pick on the building architecture. I, I don't like the appearance of Dollar Generals. If you came in here with a Dollar General that was built in Strathmore, I'd probably be jumping over the railing, um, because it's, it's a hideous example, uh, of development standards and the fact that it's a drought tolerant landscaping, which is nothing more than construction material. I recognize and acknowledge and respect the fact we've gone greatly further than that in this scenario. There's a condition of approval giving the Planning Director the authority to approve modifications of the approved plans, as long as there's no substantive, uh, change in the project. I think when you have sensitivities on a scenic corridor and you have particular issues, if you're going to retain that flexibility for the Director, which I always appreciated as Director, there's unforeseen things that come up. It's got to have some boundaries in this regard. It's got to have some boundaries on what kind of landscaping changes, or what kind of advertising changes, or what kind of downlighting changes, or architectural changes can be made, because we are looking to the Commission to approve a building that we know is going to be built there. One of my last projects before retiring was a, was a restaurant, and the building inspector went out there and sure enough, yeah, the footings were formed. Yeah, poor the footings. The rebar was all done right. The footings were set. The electrical was done right. When they got done with the project, it looked nothing like the project that was approved by the Planning Commission. Nothing. But per code, it was done right. And so we spent the last, you know, few months, uh, arguing with the developer on returning it to its original design character. And I think in this case, you're hearing from the residents, you're hearing from those that care the most about that community, that these are important factors, and there needs to be consideration given and contracted for in the, uh, in the provisions. And I don't feel like, in, in, in my experience, I don't feel like that's there. The lack of inclusion of the parcel map, we already talked about. The development is proposed outside the service area, the Springville Public Utility therefore. It's not receiving community water and sewer. Uh, I already mentioned the, the sewer service from, um, River Island East, that if it's going to go, get the sewer service too. Uh, is there identified habitat? Oh, if there's identified habitat for the Vernal Pool fairy shrimp, and you already know there's habitat there, then you should be know, you should know now whether or not that is, um, whether they're present. And the reason for that is, is that you've got an incomplete project description already, and that the project description does not include extending the water line into the project, and it didn't include the parcel map that's been previously approved. If you have offsite mitigation requirements, the whole of the project is not only the construction and development of the site, it is the development of the infrastructure and the mitigation components of the project. I know about this. I've had to do it. We've had two remote sites where we've had to put in not only the analysis of the project, but a remote site where we had to do wetlands mitigation, and we had to do cultural resources survey, biological analysis and all the rest, and a wetlands delineation to show the improved wetlands habitat. Um, the last thing I want to mention, and I guess it's probably, it, it's pertinent to this issue, and it's probably a big old elephant in the room that you guys will deal with later. I don't see representation for the Springville District 5 area. I think that's wrong. We're supposed to have a planning commissioner from District 5 on the planning commission that's not a real estate developer, that still lives in District 5. That's something that needs to be addressed. So I thank you very much for your consideration today. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and I hope you give consideration to these comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad?
Excuse us.
I had a, a question. When you had, when you had your experiences with planning commissions, where were you?
I was the Community Development Director in Porterville for 15 years, and I was in West Covina and Baldwin Park before that. And I've worked closely with the county over many years.
Here, is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? And we would like to keep it at three minutes, please, and touch what has not been covered.
Okay. My name is Oma Mansfield, 32934 Riverside Drive, Springville. Um, I spoke the last time we had a meeting, um, in the spring. And I was concerned about the water. I was concerned about the traffic. I was concerned about the, the, the aesthetics, the visual aesthetics of, of this project. And as time rolled on, um, I have some other concerns, mainly the lights. I know you're putting downlights in the lobby, or I mean, in the parking lot, but the interior lights are going to come out into the parking lot. The other thing is, this is scheduled to be open from 7:00 AM until 11:00. This is a rural area. People go to bed early. Uh, 11 o'clock is like the middle of the night for the people who live across the street. So, uh, I find the lights will be a problem, and the hours will be a problem. Also, just, uh, to remind the board that, uh, last spring, we provided the board with a petition against this project of over 600, um, signatures. In the newspaper, the, and I know you're not in charge of the newspaper, but they said a few people. Well, they said, you know, Springville has 900 residents. That's more than two thirds of the residents signed that petition. Doesn't that say something? Um, I just don't feel that it's the right place for it. As far as it being general merchandise, if it were a real supermarket, you know, you said it wasn't a supermarket. If it were a real supermarket, I don't think there would be this kind of, um, uproar. Embry attended two of our meetings last winter. No one was in favor of this. I think he maybe attended a different meeting. Um, but our residents were not, are not in favor of this. They find it very objectionable across from our entryway. So that's basically all I have to say. Um, so I'm under three minutes.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Marshall Black. I live at 40831 in Bolsh Park Road above Springville. Uh, a lot has been said. I only have a couple of things. One thing that does not seem to have invaded the thought processes of our planning department is the fact that water in that area is, let me put it this way. When you accept Del Oro's statement about the quantity of water, it doesn't mention the quality. And there is an ongoing problem there that prevents Del Oro from delivering water to the clean water standard for 12 months of the year. Every year, they have to notify their participants that they must go to bottled water for some period of time because the nitrate level goes up. This group approved a large scale residential development, which isn't working, isn't going on right now, in the same general area to be serviced by the same water supply. That affects both upstream and downstream users. To the point, but more importantly, the people who are committed to using that water are faced with the reality that they will always be shut down for some period of time because of the nitrate contract, in, in addition to some others. The other thing that I'd like to say is trips to Porterville. I don't, Dollar General is not going to stop. I've lived where I do for 43 years. If I have shopping to do, I go to Porterville. I may go to Visalia for some things, but it is not going to prevent the people of that area, the environment of Springville and the city, in the town itself, from having to make trips down into the valley. Incidentally, the nearest Dollar General is in Strathmore, I would like. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Is, is there any, would you like to give a rebuttal on any of this, or you can?
Again, John Shields, Embry Group. Um, one of the items that was mentioned was the, the driveway into the site. Actually, that location was required by Caltrans. Uh, being across from Montgomery, it also will service the balance of the property. Uh, there's a shared access that we provide to the balance of the property as well as Del Oro to the east. So I, I think that particular item has been addressed.
Thank you. Can I close?
Go ahead and close, and I have a question.
Yes.
Box could provide.
Okay. I would, uh, like to close the public testimony portion of the hearing at this time.
Could the Chair, if I may, uh, Aaron, could you give a brief summary on a recap of how we did the parcel split and how the other portions are going to develop, and specify why it's not, uh, I guess as Mr., uh, as Brad Dunlap is alluding to, that it's, it's, I guess, segmenting SEQA or?
Right. And, yeah, what he is alluding to is piecemealing. And in order to piecemeal, it has to be more than a speculative project. I mean, nothing at this point is, um, being considered for the rest of the site. The applicant did make the statement that the owner may, may have plans for the rest of the site. At this time, it's not really in Dollar General's or Embry Group's, uh, business model to, to do that type of development. And it's a matter of fact, in Porterville itself, they've experienced the same problem where Embry Group's not willing to develop out the rest of a multi-acre site, so Embry Group can't use it. Uh, in, in this case, the, the county, under the PDFM zoning, and let's not confuse another issue as far as the urban development boundary and the development corridor, this is in a development corridor. That's like the RV LP in the valley. And it's more like a, a Hamlet plan, which has a hard urban limit line. The quarter, development quarter has an urban limit line. So this is within that. So it's a tantamount to a, an urban development boundary. So within that, uh, there are no future plans for any future development at this location. Uh, as far as our general plan, uh, multiple, I mean, there's multiple acres of PDFM out there, uh, that could be developed. And it, it's speculative at best to say any of it will be. Um, this is a pretty good location across from a, a developed out piece of property. So, um, and this is the only development proposal that's come forward. And that, that speaks pretty highly unto itself. So how could we do a tentative map? The tentative map in and of itself, a parcel map, um, without more, doesn't require anything more than a categorical exemption. Uh, it was during that same hearing that it was asked that we expand upon, expound upon that, and we conditioned the tentative map. So if this project does not go through, the tentative map doesn't go through. So they're tied together at the hip. So it's all one SEQA document. We're not, we're not piecemealing. We're not segmenting, and there is no future plans for that site at this time.
Yeah, if I may, through the Chair, uh, just to expand a little bit on the parcel map. The part, the, the, the map would be allowed anyway. A person can divide the parcel anyway. The thing is that the developer does not want to go proceed and purchase it unless he's going to be able to put the thing on. Other than that, he could have come in and the, the owner of the land can come in and divide his property. It meets all the current zoning, so there's no issue there. It's just that the, the purchase of that land will not occur and close until, um, unless the Dollar General's able to build. And I, just to touch on a couple other points that Brad brought up, about Spring, Springville, and has been purchased by the Green Bus Company, uh, Green Motors, I guess is the name, and they're, they're refurbishing it because it was, it had gone through bankruptcy, and, and so they're putting new furnishings in all the rooms. They're going to utilize it. They're, they're planning to expand it actually by another, I believe, six rooms, hopefully within another 18 months to two years. So that's going. Um, it's, it's, it's speculative by nature, just the, some of the comments that he was saying, and, and, and bringing up larger scale issues that really aren't germane to what we're talking about here, talking about the general plan in, in essence. The Foothill Growth Development, or Management Plan has been in place for many, many, many years. This is something that's not come about recently. And, and to look to expand, uh, Springville's urban development corridor down and expand, these are large scale, long range. This is not what the Planning Commission's looking at. And the makeup of the Planning Commission is still not a subject of this decision that's before you today. Um, as far as the traffic impacts, Caltrans is the expert. Uh, they, they reviewed this project, and they've put their requirements and their recommendations in, which we followed, uh, to the T. So again, you know, it's speculation. It's not an ex, it's not a traffic expert making these, these, um, speculative things about what needs to be done for, for access or, or improvements on the state highway. The, the Caltrans, it's their highway, and they tell us what they need and want, and we follow that to the T. So, um, and again, many of these questions that we're looking at, SEQA questions, uh, just as, uh, as, um, Oma mentioned, that, A, if it was a supermarket, it's no problem. Well, the impacts we're talking about, environmental, water, traffic, all of these things, it, it, it's clear that the problem is with Dollar General and not with development at this site. And, and I, that, they're not SEQA, they're not SEQA arguments that they're putting forth. They're just, uh, their own personal views on a particular business, and it's really not, shouldn't be considered, in my view. Thank you.
And for the record as well, and all due respect to Brad, uh, City of Porterville does not have a planning commission.
And in all due respect, I know he was saying that, uh, we needed to ask more questions and have more information. I just want to show you how much information we have had. That's just at the end here. So we've had a lot of information. We've, I think we've asked a lot of questions. Do you have any comments?
Um, well, I, does anyone in the Commission want to offer anything on this?
No, I'm fine. Okay. I'd like to, I'd like to say a couple things that, um, I'm having a difficult time with this. And last night, at 3:30 AM, when I woke up and started turning it over, I went on the Dollar General website and looked at it. And in the history of the company, it's really kind of a remarkable story. It started out as a community center, much like Gifford's Market in Springville. And much like Gifford's Market in Springville. And the thing is, it's evolved now, 75 years later, to, you know, reflect different kind of consumer trends and marketing things. I was able to determine that Scott's Toilet Tissue is the cheapest I ever saw it, and it was on the Dollar General site. And there's something wonderful about that, because today, one of the things people do recreationally, not me, but some people actually go to stores like Dollar General, and they recreate by finding the cheapest price for an item. That's wonderful. I have nothing against that. But I also see on the Dollar General site, everything there with the exception of milk, you can buy online. And if you spend $40, it's delivered for free. So here's my point in all this. That's why my question was, where is the appropriate place in Tulare County to put a Dollar General? We have at least a dozen of them right now. They seem to me, when I see them, they're in very appropriate places. The thing that I value the most about Tulare County is our preservation and sense of how we deal with our open space. And one of the reasons we have open space in this county is because we're rural and we're a farm-based economy. Now, we have a challenge now to develop in the future what's left of our open space. To me, I don't feel that the original intentions of Dollar General convey any rural sense of character or sense of place. And in that, I agree with some of the things that Brad said. I also think, as a county, as a planning staff and as a commission, we have a responsibility to support these communities, like Springville and Three Rivers. And we need to look at a project like this, what is in the best interest of those unincorporated communities? Because we don't have a lot of really good, vital, unincorporated communities, but we do have some. And what we have left, we need to preserve. So if I was searching for a site for this project, I would look in Springville. And I would go in a place that has a vacancy and invest my capital in that, rather than taking an open piece of ground that's next to a Forest Service headquarters and put a Dollar General there. That's one of the reasons why I ask. Is this the first one off the valley floor? I think Dollar General is a viable company in today's consumer-driven economy. But everybody that wants to order from Dollar General doesn't even need to go to the store. Consider this. Since 2009, online shopping in the United States has grown 10% in every year. Where do you think this is going to be in 15, 20 years? We don't need to stick this kind of development out in the middle of a rural setting. So I'm saying, let's put it, let's keep it on the valley floor where it is now. When we did the poplar Dollar General, I was all for that. That's the only store in that town. It's walkable. People who use that store can walk to it. I don't see that here, and I don't think we need to make the kind of impacts that we're talking about here, even though the guys have done a great job mitigating them and giving us all the information we need. There's nothing wrong, according to the law, with putting this development there. What's wrong with this is sometimes there's values in this that are more than making money, developing property, and, and putting an impact on our sense of place and quality of life in Tulare County. I personally do not want to see that Dollar General on that site. And that's all I think I need to say. I mean, we can talk a lot more, but I said this the last time when this was around. Is this the right place for this type of development? I personally don't think it is.
I just would like to make a comment that as, I understand what Commissioner Elliott is saying, if it were out by itself. It's not out by itself. Across the street is the River Island. There's a bunch of houses behind it. It's not out, it's just not out by itself. It seems like it is, but it's not. The development at River Island, you can't tell me that that looks like Springville either.
I totally agree with that. But I also hear from River Island that it's not particularly what they want there for their community. I mean, that's what that petition was all about when we got that. That's a lot of people in the relative picture that we're looking at here that are standing up and said, "Not here." And to me, I think we have a responsibility to listen to that voice and those voices.
Mr. Deas, do you have a comment?
Well, the only kind of comment that I've got is, we saw some photos of Springville, and obviously what's going on isn't working. It's declining, and I don't think it's going to get any better. I'm thinking that there's a possibility that added investment in the area would spur other people to maybe come in and maybe give a shot in the arm to development in the community, if maybe the people don't want it. Maybe they want the community to continue to deteriorate. But I, but from what I've seen over the many years that I've been driving through there, it's, it has not gotten much better at all. So, you know, there's two sides of that coin. Is it, do you want, do we want to keep it rustic and rural and not develop and improve? Is that how we take care of the people in the community? Or do we give it an opportunity? So I, there's two sides of every coin, and so I, so that's, I guess, that's all I have to say about it.
I don't disagree with that at all. And I think that we do need to attract opportunity there. I just don't think that this particular project is going to attract the kind of opportunity that we could potentially have there. And our Economic Development Department does a great job of that.
I would, and I understand what you're saying. You know, this may not be what it is going to attract the additional opportunity there, but who else is stepping up to make an offer to help in that sense? Nobody that I know of for years, and the community is just deteriorating over the years. You know, people are hanging on out there just because they want to live out there. But I think it needs a shot in the arm, and I think this is a step in that direction.
Well, I would certainly support Dollar General investing in that area, but not building a new project on open ground.
I respect that.
Okay.
Before this Planning Commission does make its motion, we wanted to make sure that we do separate the actions very specifically in this case. The first one is the adequate, just the adequacy of the environmental document, the mitigated negative declaration. So that would be the first motion to be made by this Planning Commission. The second motion is in regards to the special use permit and the final site plan. So we want to make sure these are two clear and separate motions.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion, and I would make this motion that we deny both the mitigated deck?
One at a time, Commissioner.
It's be one at a time.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I would make that motion to deny the mitigated negative declaration. And what do I need to cite from that?
On the back, yes.
Can you say it loud?
Page four.
To deny the mitigated negative declaration for special use permit on number PSP 16-006 and final site plan number PSR 15-006.
Is there a second to that motion? If not, the motion dies lack of second. Do we have another motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a mitigated negative declaration for special use permit number PSP 16-006 and final site plan number PSR 15-006.
I'll second that.
Do you have the vote, please? Elliott?
No.
Yes?
Yes.
Pity Gliano? Yes. Aguilar?
Yes.
Have a motion for the second action.
To the Chair, could you announce what the decision was?
Oh, I'm sorry. That was two, three again, I'm three, four, and one against.
Approve the negative deck.
Yes. So that's to approve the negative deck.
I'd also like to move to conditionally approve special use permit number PSP 16-006 and the final site plan number PSR 15-006.
Second that?
Elliott?
I vote no.
Deas?
Yes.
Gliano? Yes. Aguilar?
Yes.
And that is a three to one vote in favor of the action. Okay, I thank everyone, staff, for doing a wonderful job. Everyone that made comments, we appreciate your comments, and we appreciate your time that you put into this. Thank you very much.
They have the opportunity to appeal?
Yes. Oh, you know, I usually have that with me. There is an opportunity to appeal.
Can you do that now?
No, that would be through the Board of Directors.
Board of Supervisors.
So, I mean, sorry, Board of Supervisors, yes. 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 Yes, you could go right next door.
Mr. Elliott, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I was going to speak, but you spoke.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was down at the bottom. I could have read it, but... Thank you.
Do you want to get the voice?
Yes. We'd, I'll go get him. I don't know that, who's left.
Leave him out there.
Yes. Well, maybe I'll ask a quick question to counsel right here. Chances are, if there was a representative from Springville, that he'd probably have to recuse himself because I don't see how a person can be objective and live up there and with the neighborhood and the impact the way that it is.
Yeah, and really, I mean, impartial, the ability to be impartial is one thing, but because two super commissioners actually had financial interests in this, they absolutely had to recuse themselves.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree, you know. And there's no, there's no reason that they, the representative from Springville can't be a real estate developer.
Right.
If you run into problems like this.
Yeah, but I mean, they, he said, he didn't see representation from Springville, but chances are, he'd probably have to recuse himself anyway.
Right.
I would think.
But the representative is not, no longer from Springville. That was his point.
I see.
Yes, he said he has since moved on, and that's why he was saying there was no representation.
Okay.
He made the point that he had moved out of.
Did Mr. Whitlock leave?
Yes.
Apparently so.
He did.
Okay, do we have, yeah, Director's report?
Yeah, thank you. We're just going to, in the, in, since we've had a lengthy, rather lengthy, we have a presentation that, for the bridge projects that we're going to give. And unless someone else has things to add, I think that would be what we'll do, is just conclude with the bridge presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Just real briefly, I wanted to introduce Jason Vivian and Juan Sanchez. They're two of the engineers in charge of our bridge program at RMA. They've got a pretty progressive program that they're working forward with. So this is a presentation they gave to the Board of Supervisors about a month ago. But thank you for your time and listening, hearing them out.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madame Board, Madame Chair, members of Planning Commission. Today, we come and give to you guys a presentation of our Tulare County Bridge Improvement Program. Like we said, this is a very aggressive program. We have programmed a lot of bridge projects with Caltrans, and we're glad to come to you and give this presentation to you guys. I'll currently go over our current program overview. I'll hand it off to Jason Vivian, our project manager. He'll talk a little bit about our historic Oak Grove Bridge Project, recently added future projects, cost summary of our projects, and we'll end off with some comments and questions that you guys may have.
Thank you.
So currently, within the last three years, we have completed six bridge projects. We have currently programmed in the, in the Federal Transportation Improvement Program, 33 bridges, nine of which are in design. These, some of these will be in construction early next year, and others maybe within two years. Six of the, we have six bridges in scoping phase. We need to obtain consultants for those. Okay, and then two, we have two ongoing construction projects. These are Avenue 416 and M319. Even though construction has ended, we do have a revegetation program that is in place for five years, I believe. And earlier this year, we got a letter from Caltrans saying that they will no longer allow public agencies to program functionally obsolete bridges and low-water crossings. Functionally obsolete bridges is a function of daily average traffic and bridge width, shoulder width, approach, approaches to the bridges. So as a result, Tulare County RMA decided to submit applications for 22 bridges prior to this deadline. Caltrans has approved 18 of the 22 submitted applications.
Good morning, Madame Chair and members of Planning Commission. My name is Jason Vivian. I'm an Engineer Four with Tulare County RMA Public Works. And as Juan mentioned, we have a very aggressive program here in Tulare County. As you can see in this picture here, we've got a photo of our recently completed project. This was completed, I believe, back in 2013, our M319 bridge project over the Quea River. There was an old, functionally obsolete, fracture-critical truss bridge that we replaced. It was a one-lane bridge, and we went ahead and replaced it to serve some of the residents in the nearby community. You're probably familiar with this project. This is our Avenue 416 Kings River Bridge. This is, I think, one of the larger bridges here in Tulare County. Construction lasted about two years. We actually realigned the approaches of the bridge and built alongside of the existing bridge to keep traffic open. And we actually added a lot of architectural features as well. You can't quite see them, but we were able to add some nice aesthetics to this bridge.
Chair, Jason, could you clarify what the fracture-critical bridge means and why that's important?
Sure, yeah. A fracture-critical bridge is a bridge which has components that are extremely critical. If you recall, there's a, the Minnesota, example of a Minnesota bridge that collapsed a few years back. That was a fracture-critical bridge. One bolt failed and the entire structure collapsed. So we have a handful of fracture-critical bridges here in the county that we would like to address. So we have several, I think, I think there's, in an upcoming slide, we've got five or so fracture-critical bridges, which we are going to eventually replace, and that's our plan. Our, part of our improvement program is to replace those bridges.
Those are a priority, then?
Yes, yes. Those, those bridges along with timber bridges, bridges where we have...
Can you tell us which ones so we don't use them?
I mean, they're, they're safe bridges. I mean, you know, it's safe to cross them. It's just that, you know, they're a concern, and we want to address those bridges, and we've, we've got the funding to do it. I mean, take advantage of the funding when it's there. So we'll do our best to get those bridges replaced. In addition to timber, a few timber, the last few timber bridges we have here in Tulare County as well, they're very high maintenance costs, and so we're trying to adjust those as well. This was, actually, this bridge here was previously a timber bridge. You know, we were going out there, our maintenance crews had to go out to this site once a year about, to go out there and repair some of the members that we had. So we replaced it with a box culvert. This bridge, we actually designed in-house, so we did all of the actual design engineering for the most... For the most part, we're doing most of our, the future projects, since we are fairly aggressive with our schedule and the number of bridges, the plan is to go out to consultants on the majority of this work. But for this one, we did it in-house, along with another one, the Road one forty-eight over outside Creek Bridge Project. Again, this was another timber, previously structurally deficient timber bridge, structurally deficient, meaning that it's just the structural elements are failing, and we need to get in there and replace the bridge. Lastly, we have the Road one D two Deer Creek Project. This one was recently completed earlier this year. This was a functionally obsolete, previously functionally obsolete bridge. And what was going on with Deer Creek was that the channel was actually subsiding. It's kind of degrading, so the material was, continued to erode, and a lot of the piles were becoming exposed, reducing some of the structural capacity of the existing bridge. So we went in there and replaced this with a brand-new, a flat slab bridge. And then earlier this year as well, we finished our Road two twenty-four over Deer Creek Bridge Project. This was previously a low-water crossing, consisted of a few pipe culverts, which about every five years on average would wash out. And so we went ahead and we programmed this as a bridge project. It's now a four hundred and fifty-foot-long bridge crossing. So I mean, it definitely needed some improvements, and now it's capable of withstanding a hundred-year floods. Finally, we'll move on to our, I've got a few slides on our historic Oak Grove Bridge. Just going to provide some information, update, kind of where we're at with this project. This project is located, you know, above the town of Three Rivers, and it's a functionally obsolete, I believe it's structurally deficient historic bridge. It's been identified as listed as historic eligible for historic listing. And here, we've got several bridge deficiencies with this, this particular structure. The deck, some of the spandrel columns, which I don't know if I can kind of show them to you if I go back here. These are the spandrel columns, these vertical members here. These, these members, along with the deck itself, they're not capable of handling the loads that are currently on the bridge, current design-level loads. So we also have barrier rails, which are in poor condition and don't meet current standards. There's, under a seismic design, design seismic event, the bridge would actually fail. And material sampling has even been conducted out at the site. You can see we have this U-bit, we call it U-bit truck, an under-bridge inspection truck, so we can kind of run our arm out there and get an inspector to look up under the bridge and kind of see what's going on with some of the elements that you can't see from the roadway. And so we took several material samples from the bridge, and it was evident that we had severe deterioration of some of the materials, which could now compromise the structural integrity of the bridge. Severe cracking was observed, which led to moisture intrusion, and you definitely have some spalling and deterioration of concrete.
Is that the bridge near the Gateway Restaurant?
It's six miles, huh?
Yes.
The Mineral King, huh?
Oh, it's on Mineral King.
Yes.
It's not the one on one ninety-eight?
No.
So can you retrofit on that, or are you going to get to that?
Yes, so I, I'll go through a couple of slides here where we're, we have three alternatives that we've identified. We haven't selected alternative, we're still in the environmental process. But we have the first alternative here, which includes a retrofit slash rehabilitation of the existing bridge. You can see that the, the elements in red are elements where we would repair some of the carbonated concrete. So we actually have to strip the exterior layer of concrete, we expose some of the steel, we drill and bond some new rebar in there, and then we actually would reset some of the concrete on those elements. We would have to remove and replace some of the green elements here, which are, again, the deck and some of the spandrel columns, and then lastly, the, the bridge barrier rail, which doesn't meet current actual criteria. And so this, this alternative in particular would require a temporary bridge. You know, because the deck has to be replaced, we'd have to build a temporary bridge for, to keep traffic open, since this is the one way in and out of Mineral King Valley. Alternative two B, our second alternative that we're considering, is a replacement with a new cast-in-place, pre-stress concrete box girder bridge. So it's actually a very similar type of bridge that you've seen for the Avenue four sixteen, a typical-style bridge that you would see on a Caltrans highway, you know, an overpass. This bridge would be located on a new alignment upstream of the existing bridge. And again, so in this case, we wouldn't need to build a temporary bridge. We could use the existing, you know, for, through traffic during construction. But there are some critical features. There's a flume that runs kind of right along here. Southern California Edison has an old logging flume, which is also an historic feature, which we would have to consider. But, you know, we'd be taking a look at that and all the different features that we'd be impacting. And so this would be, this would be a second alternative. And again, the intent of this is that we would hide the, the new structure kind of behind the old arch bridge. And so that way, the view shed and the view as you kind of drive into this horseshoe here would be maintained. And lastly, we have the third alternative, which is a hybrid rehabilitation replacement of the existing bridge. So with this particular alternative, we would actually go in and we would pull off the deck of the existing bridge, and we would build a brand-new box girder bridge, so very similar to the previous slide, the standalone structure that you saw here. But in this case, this would actually span the entire length of the channel, and the arch elements, all of the architectural features and historical features that, you know, made that bridge historic, they would be tied into this new box girder bridge that would span the length of the channel. So these features would be purely aesthetic. The, the new bridge would not rely on any of these arch elements or spandrel columns for its load-carrying capacity. So it's kind of a unique, very out-of-the-box design method that we were able to come up with, our design team. So currently, we are in the preliminary engineering phase. Again, we're, we haven't made a selection on the proposed alternative. The environmental phase is in progress. We held a public meeting earlier this year, a CQ public meeting, to incorporate and address all public comments, questions, and concerns into the environmental, to incorporate those into the environmental document. And once an alternative is selected, that'll be through our Board of Supervisors. We'll be making another presentation to our board, and ultimately, it'll be, you know, a board decision. But we will have, more than likely, have another public meeting up, up in the town of Three Rivers to inform local residents of our preferred alternative. And lastly, construction for this bridge is anticipated to start in the spring of 2020. So there's a handful of different processes that we, we still need to go through. So we're, we're still, you know, a little ways off here as far as construction.
Do you have cost estimates on the three alternatives?
I do, yes. I, I don't recall off the top of my head because they've, they've changed, but I can provide some information if you're, if you would like that.
I mean, right off the top of your head, can, are they, are they within reason? Or is there one way out of whack that...
No, from what I recall, and again, this was an early, kind of early preliminary engineering phase of it, I think all three alternatives were fairly close. I mean, a retrofit alternative would be the most economical. Unfortunately, you have to, you have to replace the entire deck. So you have to go in, you have to put up your false work, and you consequently have to build a parallel structure so you can keep traffic flow through there. And so that's where the majority of the cost, I mean, I think it was over a million dollars alone just for a temporary bridge structure to keep traffic flowing. So that's why this alternative, just, you know, directly, the money that's directly applied to the structure isn't as significant as a, a brand-new bridge would be. But I think in the end, they were all fairly close.
Just, of course, I have no say on this thing, but just as something to, an observation. I'm thinking that hybrid might be a relatively good idea. I'm thinking if you just put the self-standing or the, the bridge next to it, and then I guess have the older bridge, what, for pedestrian traffic? But I don't think there's very many people walking that.
It's a popular bike ride.
Yeah, well, oh, well, possibly. But there's certainly no place to pull, no pullouts, turnouts on that.
Yeah, there's a, there's a spot now, I think, where people, people do like to stop there. I know people even walk up, probably along the flume that SCE has.
It would be, I, I just worry because it wouldn't be upgraded, because it'd be dependent on the new one, that the, it would continue to deteriorate. And then if we did have a seismic event, it'd disappear on us. If, if it were the hybrid, kind of seem to have the best of both worlds. We'd have a new structure that it would stand, you know, something like that. And yet still retain the, the, the character and aesthetics of the existing one. Just my observation.
Thank you. And again, so construction will, we're anticipating to start in the spring of 2020. And I'll, I'll go ahead and turn it back over to Juan. He's going to go through some of the, I think, the eighteen of the twenty-two applications that we recently submitted. So we have a list here of all the different projects, and he can go into depth on those.
Sure. So this is the list that remained after the eighteen submitted bridges to Caltrans. As you can see, they total up to a little bit over forty million dollars, and our local match is only, would only be two million dollars, coming out of Measure R.
Pretty good. Bang for their buck, isn't it?
And I have a percentage, I have a cost summary of everything at the end, so it's a pretty good deal. We also submitted two low-water crossings that were accepted into, into the list or into F-Tip. Also, I think our flood commission, these are flood commission projects, and also approved by the board. In addition, we submitted, recently submitted, an additional low-water crossing. We have not heard back from, from, for that one yet, but we're anticipating that we get that one as well. So our bridge preventive maintenance program, this program is, Tulare County is responsible for about three hundred and fifty bridges that are twenty feet and over. We also have roughly fifty bridge, bridges that are twenty feet and under, which is our sole responsibility as a county. We do not get federal dollars for those. But for BPMP, we've, we submitted it to Caltrans. They've approved group numbers one and five. Group number one being metac, metaculate deck treatments. A lot of our bridges currently have a lot of deck cracking, and so this is a treatment to prevent these, this cracks to further deteriorate the decks. Groups number two, joint seal replacements. Three miscellaneous deckwork, paints, fall repairs, scour and slow protection. And mainly, this is just preventive maintenance, so that in the future, we don't have to go back and spend millions of dollars replacing all of these bridges. Cost for that would be thirteen million dollars, and coming out of our Measure R fund would be just one point five million dollars. So in summary of the completed bridges, we have nineteen million dollars, or twenty million dollars, I should say, of which one point five came out of Measure, Measure R. Our bridge is in progress. We have currently working in twenty-six million dollar worth of projects. In the future, we have forty million dollars worth of projects. Our low-water crossings, four point eight million dollars. BPMP, thirteen, totaling a hundred and five million dollars. And out of Measure R, we're only going to spend five point three million, which is roughly five point one percent.
Juan, on all these projects we have identified here on the books today, what, what's the, what's the completion date for the, for this match of...
I, I do have a schedule, but I think everything should be completed by 2027. Here is it, it's actually. So in blue, we have our bridges completed within the past three or four years. The bridges in, or in green, we have the bridges that we are currently in progress. Bridges in red, they were bridges that were recently added into the F-Tip. Yeah, and as you mentioned, we are planning to have everything end in around 2027. We should have roughly thirty-three new bridges constructed.
It's pretty aggressive.
Juan had something? Yeah, I was going to say, it was a very, it's a very aggressive schedule. I mean, I think Caltrans has told us that the typical, you know, from design all the way to the start of construction is typically four or five years for other agencies. So, I mean, we're pushing hard to try to get these bridges completed, and we're going to be very aggressive, relying on a handful of consultants to complete this work.
But when you can get that kind of money, you got to go after it when it's there, right?
Or it's gone.
Make hate when the sun shines, they say.
And then this is just a little map showing where these bridges are relative, in the, in the county. Not much there, and if you guys have any questions, or Jason, you have anything to add?
That two thousand thirteen bridge on the Quea, is that the South Fork one that we did by Cherokee Oaks?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, nice presentation. Thank you, guys. That's very informative.
On the bridges in Tulare County, how do we compare with other counties for how many? That seems like a lot of bridges.
I, I believe Fresno County has, what was their total? I believe it's somewhere closer to a thousand bridges in Tulare County. We have a large amount, I mean, just with the, the amount of road miles that we have and a lot of the streams and channels. But we are definitely one of the higher, you know, in terms of the number of projects, bridge projects that we've programmed, and we're definitely one of the higher ones, I would say. But yeah, and then, like I said, we're going to be very aggressive with this. Caltrans has told us, you need to get these projects in. If we're going to give you the funding for these, if you're, we're going to program these for you, you have to get them done within a fairly, you know, short time. We can't go beyond, you know, can't go thirty years out. It's got to be done fairly quickly.
And, and then are there federal funds that are coming in? And why I'm asking that, I just got back from New Mexico and Arizona. Every bridge I crossed over, they're working on them. I mean, they are really aggressive right now. The roads are horrible, but they're working on the bridges. So I just, I noticed it, you know, every bridge, they were working on them, so...
Yeah, and that, that might be part of their, as Juan mentioned, the, the bridge preventive maintenance program. So I mean, again, out of the, originally, we had identified over two hundred, I think, bridges that needed work through the BPMP. I think we narrowed it down to about a hundred and fifty bridges. So there'll be, you know, there's going to be a lot of work going on in the next five to six years with preventive maintenance work. But it's definitely, you know, it's, it's a tall task. But you are, as far as the funding, it's, for any off-system bridge, so smaller rural bridge projects, those are one hundred percent federally funded. So we don't have, there's not a dime that comes out of Measure R. But for on-system bridges, for example, our four sixteen bridge, that's an on-system, so it's on the federal highway system, that would be, there is a local match component to that, and so that's where the Measure R funding would kick in. And that's, it's about eleven point four seven percent of the project. That's what it is.
I don't know exactly, sorry, how, how to compare the number of bridges with other counties, but road-wise, we have three thousand miles of roads that we maintain within Tulare County, and that puts us at the sixth-largest road network in the state, including the state Forest Service and everything else. So obviously, we don't have the sixth-largest population.
Right.
But that puts a lot of lane miles at a fairly low, maybe tax base to maintain those. So I think this bridge program is a tremendous opportunity, where we're really leveraging that federal dollar opportunity. Juan kind of glanced over at the beginning, but I want to really recognize these guys. As of October, the rules changed on what was an eligible bridge to be repaired or replaced. And they probably spent three weeks, you know, eighty-hour weeks, putting together the application packages to get those bridges grandfathered in. So those twenty bridges that you're seeing, or the, well, probably eighteen or so bridges that you're seeing there, they maybe wouldn't have been eligible had they not taken the time and the effort to program them, get them on the list. So I really want to recognize them for making that effort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. You know, these little presentations have been so informative and so good for us. I mean, really, things we wouldn't even know. You kind of drive around and think, ah. You know, you notice it, but very good presentations. Yes, you can.
This, of course, is the weekend of the conference. The tribal consultation thing was interesting, because we have a session at the conference with the Luceno people, and they're going to explain how this AB fifty-two and the consultation works. We also have a, we had more sponsors come forth this year than any of the eleven years I've been associated with the organization. I happen to be the treasurer right now, and we have scholarship spots where we can sponsor with hotel and conference for key planning people that would like to attend this conference at the Mission Inn. We've got the hotel rooms, too. We've already blocked them out. So I know Mr. Washam's assistant had expressed a desire in going, full scholarship. And that goes for anybody in the planning department that really wants to take advantage of this. that really wants to take advantage of this. There's a, a community plan presentation by the Temecula Wine Country and how that all evolved. It's really interesting, too, because in the early 80s, I wrote a magazine series on the very first wineries that opened there, and now we're going back in 2016 and visit that and see what the planning has led to in creating a, a whole city kind of around Wine Country. So it's a remarkable opportunity, and like I said, we have these scholarships that were donated by our sponsors. So if any, and Tulare County's been such a great supporter of CCPCA, they should certainly send some people that could otherwise not go. Let's do that.
Are these scholarship users?
Well, the thing is, we can, we might be able to roll some of them over to next year, but the, the, we don't know where we're going to be next year, what we're going to do. We might be in Tulare County. That wouldn't be the same scholarship opportunity. But anyway, I've always been taught, just like Ed was saying, on the bridge money, let's not look a gift horse in the mouth. Let's go for it.
Use it, use it. Okay, I thank you. Do we have anything else?
Yoma, can we leave these here with you?
Yes, please recycle. I don't want to carry them out of here. Permission adjourned.